Call the Monday, March 8th work session of the Board of Education. Call it to order, and I would ask you all to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So the next order of business is public comments, and I do have a few that were sent to me. The first one is from Melissa Bailey, and the subject is the proposed proposed budget. I recently viewed the February 8th work session in which Mr. Solomon presented the proposed budget for the 2122 school year. I was so happy to see the inclusion of an additional person for the music department specifically assigned to strings. This is wonderful news. I'm the parent of two boys, both of whom have come through this CCSD Strings Program under the tutelage of Kevin Franca. My oldest son is currently a junior at Vassar College, where he continues to play the cello in the orchestra and a wide variety of ensembles, one of which he conducts. Music is very is a very important part of his life, and his love for strings began in the fourth grade with Mr. Franca. My younger son is currently a junior at CCHS and is also a cellist in Mr. Franca's orchestra. I can't express strongly enough how much my son's growth and development has been enhanced by their participation in the CCSD music program. Knowing that you are considering supporting the program by the addition of an elementary strings teacher confirms my sense that Cornwall takes the arts very seriously. You understand how important participation in music ensembles can be for children of all ages. This is there is so much to be gained by participating in orchestra and other music ensembles. The diligence of practice and commitment to an instrument and group helps develop character. In addition, music participation supports children's social emotional development in ways other subjects don't subject areas don't reach. I'm writing this letter as an appeal to you to work to keep this additional music department employee in the final budget. I understand there will be cuts made between now and April in order for the budget to pass. Please don't let this position be one of them. Mr. Franca works so hard covering multiple buildings and scheduling of students' lessons is often the price of his disjointed schedule. Other districts provide weekly string lessons for all students. Mr. Franca is simply not able to provide that. Moreover, his ability to run smaller ensembles in addition to the full orchestra is greatly limited by the simple fact that his schedule is spread too thin. His presence in any one building is only part-time. CCSD has wonderful orchestras, there is no doubt. Imagine how much more accomplished the groups might be if the students were given weekly lessons. I appreciate your taking the time to read my letter. Thank you so much for all the hard work you do on behalf of Cornwall Schools. It is much appreciated. Melissa Bailey. The next one is from Daniel Toomey. Good evening, both of our neighboring and more populated school districts of Newburgh and Washingtonville are going to four or five days of in-person learning. What did the superintendents and school boards for these districts do to achieve this, and why haven't our superintendent and school board done the same? Thank you, Dan Toomey. And our final one is from Jim Kriegen. Cornwall Central School District administrators and school board members, I would like to thank the members of the school board for the thoughtful discussion at the last board meeting on February 22nd. The meeting was a prime example of how the board can can fulfill their role of providing the necessary oversight of the district without being adverse adversarial. I would also like to thank the district administration for responding promptly to the concerns of the district parents and the board by releasing an updated survey. I'm thrilled over eighty percent of our district's parents are ready to return to school five days a week, and I look forward to sending my children back to school full-time. I hope the district keeps the lines of communications open to parents in the district as more details about the Phase One reopening on April 12th are released. I know many parents feel the lines of communication have not been open since the return to school in the fall. And Mr. Dade's letter from March 5th has reopened those lines. This flexibility and continued communication moving forward is the only way we as a community will successfully navigate the current situation. I would also like to address Mr. Dade's comment that there are people negatively targeting the district online and creating unnecessary division. I personally have been active in several online groups of parents from our district, Orange County, and several surrounding counties of the Hudson Valley. I've witnessed much confusion, not only from parents, but also from leaders of our school districts, county, and state governments. Districts blame the counties, the counties blame the state, but no one takes responsibility for providing our children with what they need. I've seen very few negative comments about the district. It would be more accurate and more charitable of Mr. Dade and the board to view the comments of parents online as calls for communication and accountability. I and the vast majority of other district parents who have joined these online groups are people of goodwill who want to work with the school district to provide what's best for their kids. Parents have been waiting for someone to take responsibility to help our children. Mr. Dade and the Board of Education answered that call on March 5th. Parents are thrilled that you have taken the lead and laid out a plan for full in-person instruction. I thank Mr. Dade for refusing to wait for Orange County and New York State to wake up and for taking responsibility on behalf of the district for our children. Jim Kriegen, Cornwall and Hudson. So I thank those families for writing in for public comments. We're going to move on to committee reports, and Larry, we'll start with you, and then we'll we'll move around to whoever else, because I know you said.
Two quick ones. The Facilities Committee, in reviewing the BCS while submitting the report to SED, Harvey and Walter found a number of corrections that needed to be made. CSARCH will be updating the respective pages and forwarding them to Harvey. Someday, we'll actually get a complete, accurate BCS that we can then share with the board and with the Facilities Committee. The Policy Committee, we're going to be meeting this Wednesday, 6:00 PM. We're going to be reviewing thirty policies. One of them is a new one. And they all that information was forwarded to committee last Friday morning. John, I haven't received a note that you have seen that email yet. Like, because I put a return receipt on that. I don't know if you got it or not.
Larry, I got it. I just didn't open up and review the material.
Okay, okay, great. And when Teresa gets on, I'll ask her. Okay, that's it, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan, any updates for us right now?
Sorry, search for the mute button. Yeah, so for the Communication Committee, we have been in contact with Terry to schedule our next community forum, and we've decided that the middle of April makes the most sense, particularly Wednesday, April 14th. For and that will be the the forum that is focused on social emotional issues, mental health.
Oh, good.
I know that that's been really the one topic that was called out and called out repeatedly by by parents. So, you know, we're happy to oblige. The the reason for the, if you want to call it a delay, you know, that we're not having it right now, is just that we obviously have a lot of moving parts right now with getting the full instruction up and running, so want to give everyone enough runway to deal with that. And then coming April 14th, we'll have a little bit more bandwidth to to make that happen. So in the weeks prior to that, people can expect a similar to the last forum that we had, you know, we'll we'll put out a a call for questions and everything, and just keep a lookout for the on the Facebook page and all the details and stuff will disseminate over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, and thank you to your committee as well. Okay, John, any update on audit?
Thanks, Nancy. So the Audit Committee met last Wednesday. We met with Terry Harvey, as well as Sue Peters, who's the independent auditor. And we talked of a number of things. First, we did a recap of the External Audit Services, RFP. Overall, the pop the comments were quite positive. Brendan came up with a very insightful answer to the question, what are the enhancements that we want to make for next time? And I think he and I will work together to present something more formally to the board. But the the notion is, how do we retain board knowledge, institutional knowledge, such that, you know, future boards don't have to reinvent the wheel? Or if they do choose to to reinvent the wheel, it's based on understanding what practices have been done in the past. So I thought that was a very insightful comment, and he and I will work together to to present something to the full board on possibly a way to achieve that for not just Audit Committee stuff, but but also other areas that the board provides oversight and judgments on. So that was good. We also talked about the the new claims auditor and his new reporting schema, which we found to be quite insightful as well, and definitely an improvement from what we were receiving before. And so we were encouraged by that. We we did talk with Sue Peters about the upcoming audit plan for this school year and the timeline to achieve that. She she promised that she would get with Harvey and work with Harvey over the next few months, such that come our next meeting in June, she would be able to provide us an updated risk assessment, as well as whatever findings she may have in terms of what areas that she's looking at, so that we can report to the board by the end of this calendar year, or correction, this school year. The last thing we talked about, just that was material, was our our plans moving forward in terms of conducting RFP for the Internal Audit Services. We're not at that stage yet to make a recommendation to the full board. We're we've asked Harvey to to do some research for us to find out about the timing and whether we could do it, say, in the summer or in the fall with maybe a conclusion of that process by the calendar conclusion of 21, so in December 21. So we still have some more work to do. I expect all that to to filter through the to the committee, and we'll provide a a recommendation to the full board probably sometime in June. And that's.
Okay, thank you.
My report.
Okay, John, were we able to get all the minutes from all the audit committees to to Linda, as I asked?
So so we're in the process of of doing that, Nancy. We've we've had some computer problems, and that's forthcoming to 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 Linda, and she should have that by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. That's good, because then that'll be posted for the public to read as well. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I do want to mention one thing before we any. Are there any other committees that need to report? I'm sorry. Okay, before we move on to Terry's update, I just want to mention that as far as the board comments, I will be sending the board a whole outlay of those comments so that they have them personally to read, in addition to some other correspondence that I'm going to refer to when I do my update. But Terry, we're we're ready for you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So I have shortened update today because I had a lot to say on Friday in our update for the community. So I'm sure a few people read the letter and and some next steps. So we are indeed excited about looking at all the possibilities for next steps. Very clear that there's a lot of unanswered questions and some things that we have to figure out as a district to make sure that we implement to the same success that we did with our reopening, which I've stated time and time again, has been one of the most successful reopenings of schools on the very first day in September 8th in the state. So one of those next steps was Walter and his team just never cease to amaze me. I asked for a mock-up of a classroom with plexiglass barriers, and they put that together this morning in one of our teachers' classrooms, who would have one of the most amount of students in her class once both cohorts came in. So she joined us, some of her colleagues, our teacher colleagues, joined us, principals, and Walter's team, just Harvey was there, just to see kind of what this could look like. So we're we're excited about thinking through the different possibilities from six feet to three feet to some barriers to whatever they throw at us. We're going to be ready to go. So I appreciate everyone's ongoing support and patience. This work is not easy, but we're going to do it the Cornwall way, and that's with excellence in mind and with everyone being happy with the final product. So that's it for tonight.
Okay, and I'm going to ask the board, just if you have any questions for Terry, we're going to hold them until I'm done with my update as well. So I wanted to make sure I was touching all bases, so I apologize that I'm going to read this, but I wanted to make sure I was getting everything in. So I felt it was important to explain a few things to the community as well as to my board and to give you an update as to what has gone on the last two weeks on my end. First, I want to explain to everyone that the comment feature is not available during the meeting. I would ask that you remember, everyone, the board and the community as well, that the board has a policy for public comments during the meetings. This is not a community forum where we have dialogue back and forth, and that's the norm for community forums, but this is a business meeting. It's our hope that the community will understand that even though we are on Zoom, we are hearing to our policies for public comment. Hopefully, we will be back in person in the near future, and and we're working out the logistics for that, too, for everybody's safety, for for the board, for participants, and that sort of thing. So but that's why there's no comment available, because this is a business meeting. It's not a public forum. I would like to share with you a look at what what our board in case it was with a look at our board personally, in case it was a concern that maybe the board doesn't grasp what the families are going through. And I found this very interesting when I stopped and started tabulating things. For and I think we have a very unique positive look at things as a board and an administration because of this. Four members of this board have children currently in the district. Two have grandchildren currently in the district. One has grandchildren all in school but not in this district. One has two college children, one that was a senior at CCHS last spring during the start of the shutdown, and both currently attending classes remotely. And one has adult children working remotely. As far as our central admin team goes, our superintendent and one of our assistant superintendents have children in the district. And one of our assistant superintendents has college children learning remotely. And so I wanted to share that with you, not adding names. I'm sure everybody can figure out who's who, but it just I thought that was a very interesting point to share with the community and even our own board. At our last meeting, I said that as board president, I would reach out and advocate for this district and reopening as much as I can. I've emailed Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, who has started the petition to change the year-old mandates that schools must follow, and he has been a vocal proponent for all of us. I emailed Senator James Scoofus. As I didn't hear back, I emailed Carlos Valli, Senator Scoofus's Chief of Staff. I spoke with him this morning at length, and Carlos shared that the Senator's Office has been in contact with the area school districts and will continue to reach out to Albany on our behalf. I have emailed the New York School Boards Association twice. We have our area coordinator. Although they have been advocating quite strongly for relief funding for schools, I am disappointed in their lack of advocacy to allow schools to follow less restrictive distancing measures. Heard back again this morning, and it reinforces my belief that while they are advocating on some fronts and some issues, they really haven't done anything for us on the six-foot rule, and are pushing for loosening restrictive message measures. Larry is our delegate to the Orange County School Boards Association. Last Wednesday was their meeting, and Cornwall was an agenda item. So thank you so much, Larry, for for representing us. I sent a letter to our neighboring districts encouraging us to band together as there is strength in numbers. Also given to them were copies of the sample letters put out to the governor and other elected officials that were made available to our community from this board. Louis and I also reached out personally to those school board presidents we know in the county to encourage them as well. I have included County Executive Steve Newhouse and the Orange County Legislature on all emails I have sent to Dr., excuse me, Dr. Irina Gelman, the Orange County Commissioner of Health. I have not heard back from the county executive nor anyone in the Orange County Legislature. Dr. Gelman's email responses have been, in my opinion, insulting and very good at avoidance tactics. Anyone in the entire community who has emailed her, I think, has found the same thing. Her responses will include links to New York State COVID information, and she has yet to answer any question I have asked her, and there have been many. This morning, I resent an email I had sent to her, CCing Steve Newhouse and the Legislature again, with some very specific questions. Still no answer. I'll get to that answer later on in my little update here. Because I like to read, I'd like to share something with you. And for my board, you, if you don't have a chance to read the NISBA news clips, they are sometimes very enlightening for what's going on around the rest of the state, makes you go, hmm, not here in Orange County, why not? The Anandaga County Executive has decided to allow schools in his county to reduce the distancing requirements in order to get schools open for all children five days. That is the county that includes the city of Syracuse and several other large districts, as well as smaller districts. Why not Orange County? No answer from those in charge here when I sent them the links to two articles, which also made reference to distancing when possible on school buses, not mandating six feet apart. Westchester County, with their own county Department of Health relaxed their quarantine rules, I believe we've shared that before, to a common sense approach, instead of anyone within the building goes out and stays out. The actual definition of the word proximate, because now I'm looking words up and getting official definitions, means close or nearby, not 500 feet away. Masked. Somewhere around February 24th, the state told us information for schools would be forthcoming next week. Nothing, not a single update from the governor or Dr. Zucker on anything regarding schools. We are still using year-old guidelines, and it seems that helping our schools is not important to the powers in Albany. No response from New York State to me on an email that I sent last week. We all know that many emotions are raw and passions are running high. I do not want anyone out there to think that for one second that this board and this administration is not fighting as hard as possible to get our schools open fully and safely for all. We may not be shouting in in the street, but we are actively advocating for our children. The lack of responsiveness from this state and this county, to me, is absolutely unacceptable. The continued deflecting of who is responsible by Dr. Gelman is beyond unacceptable. And for those of you that don't know me, trust me, I have told her. I would like to read you a closing paragraph that Christopher Erickson, who is a Deputy Commissioner of Health, sent to me today. This was after two unanswered emails from Dr. Gelman, where I was looking for specific answers to a few questions. If any of you have ever asked Dr. Gelman a question, you know it never gets answered. This was Mr. Erickson's response to me in his closing, after he gave me links to look up that referred to the state, which I don't need them because I have seen them too many times from all the work that we've done as a district, plus all the times Dr. Gelman sends an answer, it's just links to state state stuff. The county health department has no legal role in setting the state standards. If your district does not want to abide by the state's standards, all the state needs to do is let you run your school however you want. That would likely be appreciated by all of us. This is someone who works for the people of the county, quite a snarky response, and yes, I gave him a snarky response back. My closing paragraph from my email back to him was, your last sentence is very telling of the attitude of the Orange County Department of Health. I am sure you would appreciate it if I went away. That, Mr. Erickson, is not happening at this point. I will be sharing your letter with our community tonight at our Board of Education meeting, and I said, unlike the Orange County Department of Health, the CCSD will advocate for our children with everything we've got. This board and this administration will continue to fight for the children in this district, and I want to let everybody know that. I'm just flabbergasted at how much we are trying to do and how much we are not even getting answers for, because the state's not bending and the county is just digging its heels in. So I just wanted to share that with everybody tonight. That's my update. We have done a tremendous amount of advocacy on behalf of of the families in this district, and we all know our children are the most important thing, and that's what we're all working for. So I thank you. If anybody has any questions at this point, and to my board, I will be sending you a copy of Mr. Erickson's email, too, so you can and my response back to him. But there has been numerous emails that I have sent over the course of the last two weeks. There's probably too many to even, especially to Dr. Gelman, but we won't go there. Anyway, anyone have any questions for Terry?
So Nancy, I have some questions for Terry, but but, you know, last in, first out, I guess. So so I understand now that you've written to various elected officials at the county through the state level. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
As as well that, i- is it possible for you to provide that correspondence to the board so the board can review what the the issues that you have highlighted are?
I certainly can. In general, it was, the general message has been reducing the mandates from the state. To the county, it's also, why are other counties taking charge, and our county is pretty much hands-off from lots of different things. And the more we learn what other counties are doing, you really do wonder, why is Orange County not doing doing what we're suggesting or or just listening to us and saying, well, let's try this or let's try that. I'm not saying they have to listen to everything we tell them. But it's been, yeah, John, I'll be happy to put everything together in a packet for the board.
It and and you know what would be helpful as we as we move through this, and this is probably the the first salvo of of shots, right? There's probably going to be a lot more volleys going forward. It 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 might help for the board to to weigh in on what those things look like, such that we could then put the board's best view forward. Not saying that your view was not reflective of the board, but since we have seen it, I can't really comment. But I do know, in talking to politicians, this is a very complicated issue, and there are lots of dollars at stake. And so when they appear to acquiesce, it could be because they're fearful of of actual state funding, not to make any excuses for anybody. But there is a lot of things that I think would benefit the district as well as our position in having it changed if we could speak as one voice. The power of 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 speaking as one should not be lost, and I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the district, but would request that as we do that going forward, that we 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 have a chance to to kind of brainstorm along with you.
Well, and John, I would remind not only you, but the entire board, that the board is also welcome to use those letters that were that were put out as a template if they want, or to also reach out to anyone that they feel that they would like to. Because I I think, like we have, we have said to our counterparts at the Orange County School Boards Association, there is power in numbers, and I think the more people that that are heard, just like the parents have been really have been reaching out to to different to the county health department, to elected officials. I I think that even as individuals on the school board, if if you had a question or wanted an answer from an elected official or anyone in the county, I said, I really do believe that that anyone should be doing that as well. So I'll put the whole packet together and get that to everybody.
Nancy, I would agree with that. We as individuals can speak to anyone we we care to. But in terms of our position as an elected official, I think it carries more weight when we all speak the same message as one, even in our private conversation.
Using using the letters that were put out, that's that same message. So that would also be even a good starting point for anybody on the board that wanted to send out something with the same message.
Right, but 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 that would be as an individual. When we speak as a board, it should be as one, and I and I would I would I would propose that going forward, we 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 kind of have that discussion before that on behalf of the board stuff goes out. But that's for another day. The next question I have is, in terms of this chat feature, could you help me understand? You 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 talked about it, but I'm sorry, it's above my head. Could you? What what?
Well, apparently, there's a bad feature on Zoom when people sign on, and it it kind of turns into more like a public forum where people making comments. I can tell you, for those of us, for some of us, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but for some of us, it can be very distracting as the comments appear across the top. It's also not a public forum, so we as a board should not be having conversations back and forth based on comments, because if it was a live meeting, we wouldn't be doing that. And so because we are doing a Zoom meeting, we still have a chance for public comments. I checked my email up to 5 o'clock the day of the meeting. I've been doing that since we've been doing Zoom, and anyone is welcome to send something in. But to have the conversations back and forth during a business meeting is really, it's not the way we run our meetings, and it's against our policy for public speaking at at meetings. So we will be back live, and people are welcome to come, or if they're not comfortable coming, they can certainly send comments that can be read into the record, like we we will continue to do that to be respectful of those that are not comfortable coming to a meeting. Okay, but that's but that was the that's because the chat feature, I don't believe, was there originally. If it was, no one was using it. And then the last meeting was for myself, very distracting, but also in general with the bantering back and forth, we that's not that's not how we run our meetings, John, and it's a public forum is is would be most conducive for that, and that's where you have that dialoguing back and forth with people, not during a regular business meeting.
Okay, I I I'm not aware of any kind of dialogue in a chat room or anything at the same time that this meeting's held. So my screen only sees people and names. I don't see any kind of comments, so I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay.
But I I I would think. But, uh, um, I, I, I would think is, if you seem to suggest that that is a policy issue, and if it is a policy issue, then shouldn't the policy committee kind of look into that before we make a, a, a change or something? It, it strikes me as, as funny that we're making a change to what was in the past done, and I wasn't even aware of it, but it seems like you've decided that that's the way forward without the policy.
Observation in the past that wasn't done, it happened to be turned on because of an update on the Zoom software. It turned itself on. It had not been on previously. Once it came on, it became an issue. One meeting, last meeting. And now we've turned it off again to the way it used to be. I have made a note to myself to, uh, discuss at the policy meeting, perhaps to come up with a policy for Zoom meetings.
Right, right.
So, but it's not a, it's not a change, really. It is going back to the way it was. Only Zoom made a change, and we just put it back to the way it used to be.
John, John, hang on a second. Additionally, it's not a change from our policy because our policy is, is that you have designated times to speak at a meeting, and it's not, um, and so because we're doing Zoom, we've asked for comments to be sent in, again, up till five o'clock on the day of the meeting. And, um, so we're not changing an existing policy. We are upholding our policy because I liken it to that if we had a live meeting and people were just shouting out comments from the, not shouting out, but saying comments from the audience instead of waiting until the designated comment times. Okay, and again, it's not a public forum, it's a business meeting, and we have the way we conduct our business and the, the, you know, and we always include even, even though we've gone to Zoom for so many of the meetings, we always include, um, the, um, you know, how the, the policy for speaking at a board meeting is attached to every agenda. Information, and it's the last item, information for taping and speaking at Board of Ed meetings. And that's, that's nothing new. That's been something that we've had.
Well, sure, I, again, I'm, I'm not aware of any kind of chat room or dialogue that board members were having with the public during the last meeting. That's, that's news to me, you know, um, kind of interesting in this state of technology, but I do, Larry, I, I, I hear you. We're going to look at it at the policy committee level, and, and that answers my, my concern. Thank you.
Nancy?
Yes.
Let me get a little bit of a follow up on the Orange County School Board meeting. Regent Frances Wills was there, who's our representative. And, um, in a nutshell, she was very supportive of what we're trying to do. I had given her copies of the letters. She feels that, uh, every child should have a meaningful education. She, uh, supports our efforts. She was listening to us. And, uh, the problem she came up with was that the regents, uh, have absolutely no say over the Department of Health. And the Department of Health, uh, is too rigid, and she agrees with that. They are not just taking it at face value and backing off, they're still going after the Department of Health. However, if the department, that New York State Department of Health isn't going to move, there's nothing that they as a group can do about that. The Department of Health supersedes, their, their rules supersede them. She feels that, uh, they need flexibility to allow kids to come back to school. And New York State Department of Health so far has not been doing that. There was a, uh, a group discussion at the end where we talked about our letters that we were, and everybody got a copy of those letters. They agree to, uh, move forward to contacting their people and their public and their, uh, their representatives. And, um, they have the exact same problem with the Orange County Department of Health that we do. And some of them won't even bother talking to her anymore because she's not answering them. And that was, that was what was going on there, but there was, they did thank us for bringing it forward and to, to making it an issue to be addressed.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Nancy, if I, can I just, yeah, sorry, just to double back to, uh, Terry's update. Terry, so I know like this is all a, uh, exploratory phase and you're, you're, as you mentioned, you're, you're figuring out what works. Uh, I'm just, what, at what, uh, what level of progress can people expect by the next meeting, you know, should, with their, do you have a, a plan for when you'll have the specifics? Uh, I just want to people to kind of wrap their head around what the, the, now we have a, you know, a date. That's, that's great, but I know people are going to be anxious to see, you know, what, what milestones will hit per, per week. So I'm, I'm curious, next time we, we speak to you, do you think that you'll have, uh, you know, a, a plan to present or at least more details than, uh, you know, to, to put on a, a prospective plan?
Uh, definitely more details, but a solidified plan, absolutely not. Uh, I'm just going to ask everyone to realize that announcement on Thursday could completely change our approach. So remember I was talking about the barriers, whether we would have a full set like we did a mockup today. That would be six foot or barriers. No change. Uh, Nancy and I have been sending email, email, email um, to see if we can go face shields versus barriers. That's another important, important component of a next step. Uh, we've sent question after question about, uh, transportation. Uh, so, um, I can guarantee there will not be a solidified plan the next time I see because there's way too much, uh, left to, um, to figure out. By way of update, yes, absolutely. We can let everyone know the progress the next time we meet, what questions we have had answered, what the, uh, plan will be to be a go on April twelfth with as much information, um, as we have. So that's um, kind of what we're looking for, uh, by way of next steps. Um, but again, um, Nancy did a great job of sharing kind of our frustration with, um, the reopening plan had a hundred forty-five pages of, if you had a question, it was in the document. We're looking for simple answers to a few questions that would allow us to move forward quickly that are going unanswered by the very people who will hold me accountable if something's not in place, health and safety. Why? So that's beyond frustrating. Um, so yes, an update on our progress, absolutely a solidified plan. Um, I can't promise that because of how many questions, um, remain.
No, no, I'm just trying to, uh, kind of level expectations. And so, but I think the, the pertinent line that, that you, uh, you mentioned before, and I, I'd like to underscore that if I could, and maybe you, you can agree or disagree, is that the goal right now is to plan for all contingencies. So regardless of what the state of the guidelines is come April twelve, we'll be ready. Is that a fair summation of your thinking?
Yes.
I saw superintendent, uh, I saw, I'm sorry, president's update on the, uh, agenda, and I thought this is going to be something, so. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to.
I had something for Terry. Uh, so, so so help me understand what happens April twelfth? Or, or what's the final step? Who signs off on our, our plan if we go in person? Five days.
Resubmit to, uh, the state. Um, as, uh, Nancy explained, anything that you receive from Orange County Department of Health says, send your plan to the state, whatever they say is what will go with. So it will be a resubmission um, to the state with the updates, just stating that we would be installing barriers to adhere to their very mandate of six foot or, um, barrier separation uh, for our students, and any other pertinent updates that would result from that kind of change.
Okay, so, so Nancy mentioned Onadaga County. And Jay, uh, Ryan McMahon, the county exec there actually is going above and beyond. I guess he's actually said he's going to underwrite some of the extra expenses that pertains to the barriers for deaths and the like, which is, I don't know where he's going to find the money, but that's great on him. Hopefully our county exec can get to the same level of support for schools as on a dagger, but who knows? With, with enough public outcry, anything's possible as we've learned going forward, but we'll see. Does Orange County, does the path to reopening in person go through Orange County and then to the state? Or is it just like a courtesy copy to the Department of Health? What?
Courtesy copy of that.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, courtesy copy. It's a state approval at this point.
So, so Orange County is not in it at all? No, okay, thank you.
If I can add, actually, you, you just reminded me of something, John. I think that, I mean, my observation from just the last couple of weeks is that the onus has moved to, well, the onus shouldn't have moved to the counties, but that's, th- those are the people that are taking the lead, whether it's Duchess County or not even going to pretend to pronounce the Syracuse County, but the one that you mentioned. I think that's become the model, and now I, we may get into this weird dynamic where the state just says, okay, let, if that's how counties want to do it, then that's how we'll do it, and they'll use that as an excuse to still not change their guidance. So, uh, for what it's worth, I know that there are people listening, people that are engaged in advocacy. I think it's worthwhile, if you have limited bandwidth to advocate, to focus on our county level, because that is where the change is happening in other counties. So that would be, uh, Steve Newhouse, uh, county executive. Hey, getting, I, personally, I don't, I don't know if direct communication with Dr. Gelman is really, uh, worth anything, because as we see that it, it can just be ignored. Public, public letters are a different story. If you write letters, open letters, let's say in, uh, county or, or area publications, these are the kinds of things that, you know, adding, uh, a spotlight to their, their lack of diligence, I think is more effective certainly than writing a private letter. But, uh, letters at the county level to, to Newhouse, and then, uh, you know, the legislature. Again, if you, if you have enough energy to carpet bomb everyone in the, well, I, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't use that terminology, it'll be construed literally to, to, to email everybody on the, on the list, then, you know, by all means, but if you had to choose, I would say direct your efforts at the, the county level, that's probably our highest, uh, chance of success right now. And again, that's a personal view, so anybody can feel free to, uh, disagree with that analysis.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I do want to just share with the board that, um, Margaret had a family emergency and had to leave. So we'll, I, I'll email you all later and just keep her and her family in our thoughts right now, please. The consent agenda. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that item will be considered and voted on separately. Anyone wish to pull something out individually?
Yes, Nancy, can we pull, uh, number five, the PPS evaluation resolution?
Yep, number five. Anyone else?
Nancy, I'd like to pull number two, please, personnel.
Okay, so then that leaves us three, four, and six. Okay, um, it is recommended by the Board of Education approve the following consent agendas approved by the superintendent of schools, items three, four, and six. Do I have a motion?
The move.
And a second? Roll call, Louis?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Is Teresa here? No, okay. Um, Brendan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nina?
Hi.
And myself, hi, thank you, motion carried. Okay, so item two is personnel. It is recommended by the Board of Education that we approve personnel item number two. Do I have a motion?
The move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, um, discussion? Okay, roll call.
I'll be abstaining from this vote. Uh, I have, uh, uh, my niece is actually substituting, and I'll be abstaining for her appointment.
Okay, so Louis abstained. Matt?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Brendan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nina?
Hi.
And myself, hi, thank you. Item number two is.
Nancy, Nancy, one thing on that. I just want to say thank you to Terry for making the correction from the last meeting on, uh, personnel action, getting that squared away. Thank you very much.
Okay, and item number five is the PPS evaluation resolution resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education does hereby approve the agreement with the Westchester Institute for Human Development to provide assistive technology evaluation and training services during the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion?
The move.
And a second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Nancy. So, uh, I guess this would likely go to Harvey. I've read the, the contract. Uh, I'm just kind of looking for, you know, a high level explanation. Some of the things that just confused me, and this could just be, you know, defining the terms. As, uh, as is mentioned in the resolution, it is described as, let's see, assistive technology evaluations, but then in Schedule A, and itemizing possible services, it's speech language pathologist, occupational therapist. So I guess I hear assistive technology and then speech language pathologist, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So, you know, if you can just give us a, the memo version of this, uh, with a particular highlight on, just in layman's terms, what are these services? Who are they for?
Sure. So these services, uh, we are coming to terms with this organization because of the needs of one particular child right now. Should the needs expand, we have a contract or an agreement in place with this facility to provide the assistive technology evaluation. Um, that is purely what we're looking for. The contract that, or the agreement that you're looking at with the other services are not those that we would be using. So that, that's the Cliff Note version.
So it's just a lot of boilerplate?
From them.
And that doesn't really apply. Got it. Okay, I thought maybe that was the case. All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Um, I'm sorry, roll call, forgot my. Louis?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Brendan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nina?
Hi.
And myself, hi, thank you, motion carried. Okay, item E, new business non-consent items. KJ water exemption resolution. Whereas the Board of Education and the Cornwall Central School District has received a request from the village board of the village of Curious Joel to grant an exemption from school district taxes for certain real property owned by the village within the Cornwall Central School District used by the village for water supply purposes, and whereas the Board of Education has given due consideration to the village's request, now therefore be it resolved as follows that the Board of Education hereby denies the request of the village of Curious Joel to exempt certain real property within the town from school district taxes. Do I have a motion?
The move.
And a second?
Second.
Matt, second. Um, any discussion? What I would just like to point out that we have voted on this already in the past. And it has now come up again, and that's why the resolution is to deny the request. Okay, and I, I, I know we had some sort of an explanation from Harvey on that. Thank you, Harvey. Anything else you want to add to that, or? Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, Louis?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Brendan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nina?
Hi.
And myself, hi, motion carried, thank you. All right, we are up to our budget presentation. Harvey, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, let me just share the screen, please. Okay. So everybody should see the, uh, the presentation on their screen. What we're going to be doing tonight, once again, we're going to be diving into the expenditure side of the budget. As you might recall, last budget meeting, uh, last board meeting, we went through half, approximately half of the eleven key areas making up the budget. But before we, we jump into those real quickly, uh, it's important to reassess where we stand. But before we we jump into those real quickly, it's important to reassess where we stand. And if you might recall, we had a host of open items that we identified last time. We still have some open items, but some of them have been resolved. As you can see, there are three key ones. We have received some additional BOSI's COSA rates, which we factored into the budget. We have had the status of some annual reviews finalized, which is good. And we had an increase in property tax revenue recovery from border properties. Now, let me just explain what this last one means. There are there are properties within our school district that literally sit on the border between us and Newburgh. So if you are in one of those homes, you have the choice to send your child or children to either Newburgh or this Cornwall School District. It's totally up to you. If you send them to Cornwall and you are paying property taxes to Newburgh, we as a school district have the right to bill Newburgh for those taxes, so they pay us them back. And that's really what this amounts to. We had received the final data with respect to those properties and those students who are coming to our school district. So we picked up about $8,000 more than we we had originally anticipated, which is a good sign. As it indicates there, we still have some key information we're waiting for. There are just a few remaining COSA rates we're waiting for. We have not received any further staff retirements, though we anticipate receiving them before the end of this month. Annual reviews are ongoing. Final state aid figures still remain unknown. We also are waiting for the impact of the federal COVID relief legislation that is moving along. And lastly, the board in terms of identifying what the final property tax percentage will be. So let's move to our 11 key areas. As I mentioned before, we've identified and we've closed out a couple of open items. They affect the two lines that have the red star. So the contractual supplies, that is where we factor in the BOSI's COSAs. And with respect to the special ed annual reviews, that's the out of district tuition. In both cases, the 21-22 budget for each of those lines has come down slightly, so that's a good thing. Now, with that said, what's the real impact of him? So this is a slide you're going to see every board meeting that we go over the budget. And what it is, is it's really a it's an ongoing tally. It's it's it's, you know, our summary sheet of where we stand each each every two weeks here. So we started last board meeting and we had a a what I like to call a budget surplus, proposed surplus of $72,321. Based on the impact of those three items that we talked about being closed, that bumped it up by about $50,000. So we're at to up to about 122. Again, not a monumental jump, but it is all about incremental incrementally moving toward our goal. We need to address the needs that we talked about during the first budget meeting. So let's move on to the various items, various areas that we we have yet to touch on. The first one is the out of district tuition. Out of district tuition for next year is budgeted at just a little more than $4 million compared to this year of 4.1. So it's actually a decrease of $36,175. What this line item, what this budget item calls for is this is the cost of tuition and the related services for us to send our special needs students to other facilities out of the district. Again, as I keep reiterating, the annual reviews are ongoing. This number will most likely change through the budget process. So in terms of out of district tuition, there are various placements that these students go. The first one is BOSI's. We have 28 students who are attending four different BOSI's. And just to give you kind of an order of magnitude, the average cost of those programs, both tuition and related services, comes to about $85,000 per student. We also have out of district day programs that aren't BOSI's. And there we have 17 students attending eight different programs in a variety of different counties. And as you can see there, the average cost for those students is approximately $69,000. These are not, these are not cheap programs. These these children are are needy and these are the programs that are working to move them forward, which is great. And lastly, we have out of district residential programs. So obviously, as the as indicated, these are, this is programs that the kids actually stay at these facilities. We have four students. They're going to four different locations. And the average cost is just short of $130,000. The reason this is a little higher, as noted, the residential students, we also incur the cost of maintenance, which is, think of that as room and board. The next area we'll move to is debt service. So debt service really speaks toward the cost of our principal and interest on our borrowings. Borrowings being the three items down below. These are the respective bonds that are still outstanding. So we have the high school. This is when the high school was built. And the outstanding balance is still just a little short of 23 million. Our debt service interest and principal for 21-22 will be 2.9 million. Next, we have the New York Power Authority. This was related to a district-wide energy project that we did in conjunction with DIPA. This is when, you might recall, we converted all of our fuel, oil, fuel burning furnaces to natural gas. And again, the debt service there for next year is a little more than $400,000. Lastly, we have a district-wide ADA. The debt service is $354,705. This was back when we put in, the lion's share of this had to do with putting in elevators into the respective buildings that did not have them. It's important to note, obviously, as you see here of the three, the top one, the high school is the is the largest and the most significant. What I can tell you is that back in 2012, that bond was refinanced. And it is not callable to be refinanced again until October of 2022. So we will certainly be looking to do that on the presumption that the rates continue to stay low as where they are. Next, we move to transportation. Transportation for next year is a little more than 3.8 million. This year, it's 3,750,000. So we have an increase of about $100,000. The contract or the agreement that we have with West Point Tours to provide the transportation services to our children is a one-year extension coming off of an expired five-year contract for this year. So the contract is expiring this June. In accordance with SED regulations, we can extend that for one year at a time. And that increase would be based on the May 2021 CPI increase. Do note that the above budget is not just reflective of what we anticipate that CPI increase to be, but it's also reflective of any changes in transportation needs. We may have more children going to one facility versus another. We may have to put another bus on. We may take one off. So there is that it's very dynamic, particularly with respect to special needs. And as you can see there, we travel quite a bit. The buses for the district travel almost 800,000 miles a year. We go vast and wide. To give you some indication of that, we have obviously in-district public school, that's home to school. We go to non-public schools. We, as I indicated just before, we go to out-of-district special ed and vocational programs. We have athletic team travel. And lastly, we have special programs. So let's just look at a couple of these. The in-district public schools. That reflects 25 buses and five vans that are on a three-tier system. Every single day, those buses, each bus goes to the high school route. Then it immediately goes to the middle school route, and then it immediately finishes up with the elementary school route. The out-of-district special ed and vocational programs. We have 17 buses and vans that transport the 49 special needs students to 16 out-of-district educational facilities. We also have two buses that on a daily basis transport 70 students to BOSI's for the vocational programs. When we look at public, non-public schools, we are required by law to provide transportation to non-public schools within a 15-mile radius. And we do so with six buses and vans, and we transport 39 students to eight different schools. When you look at the athletic travel, as you can see there, we have a host of different teams. Each one of them have away games. And we have to transport them. Lastly, we have a variety of what I call special programs. We have field trips for the students to go to Black Rock and Sands Ring. We have regions testing days. What that basically speaks toward is, in addition to our normal pickup and and take home at the in the PM, regions might have a tester in midday and the students have to get home. So these are midday routes. We have walking wounded where a student may be injured. They may be in a cast. We have to provide a wheelchair lift. They usually had take a special van. Homeless students. The McKinney-Vento Act is a federal act. It requires school districts to transport up to 50 miles each way for students who are deemed homeless. We have childcare pickup and drop-off. Not every child comes to school directly from their home or goes directly home after school. Non-family childcare locations are transported to and per regulation, they have to be licensed, subject to special social services laws. And lastly, we have something known as a community-based instruction program for special needs students. This is a tremendous program where they get to get life skills and experience working in real operations. And as you can see there, we go to the American Filter and Felt Company. They go down to West Point, the commissary, as well as the Hudson Valley Food Bank. Next, we're going to move to utilities. Utilities are 862,000. They're up about 35,700. As you can see there, these numbers include electricity, natural gas, fuel, oil, propane, water, and sewer. It's quite a bit of utilities. Every school building now has natural gas boilers. The district office still uses fuel oil and the buildings and ground building uses propane. It's important to note that with respect to electrical and natural gas, to maximize our purchasing power, we are part of a 25-school district consortium. And I break down the respective types of utilities down below. What you'll notice will kind of sticks out is the natural gas. And the reason for that is consumption is is inching up just ever so slightly. But most importantly, the price of natural gas has been going up for from the current year to 21-22, we're looking at close to a 10% increase. Next is occupational education. 834,470. We are, as a school district, as every school district, required to offer our high school students a vocational education option. Obviously, we don't have that in district, so we utilize BOSI's for that. Orange Oster BOSI's has a very, very broad and vast VOTEC education program. They have 34 programs, 12 different career and technical academies. For this current year, we have 68 students enrolled in those programs. Insurance. Insurance is all about our risk management program. We carry 10 different insurance policies. Seven of those policies we carry through an organization called New York State, I'm sorry, New York Schools Insurance Reciprocal, NYSER. They represent 353 public schools in New York State. That's all they do is public schools. They were founded on the presumption that a consortium, so to speak, of public schools can operate more efficiently and more cost-effectively than a regular for-profit organization. In addition, the number up above for 21-22, it reflects unemployment insurance of $78,624. Lastly, we have an item called transfer to capital. We have the same amount as as the current year, 355,000. I would love to get that to be higher. Why? This is the amount that's included in the budget that we use to fund what I call small capital projects. By virtue of being in the in the general fund budget, it does not need a separate vote. It doesn't need a separate referendum. It's part of the budget that the taxpayers vote on generally. For 21-22, we have slated a single project consisting of replacing the high school cooling tower. The cost of this project is estimated to be approximately $750,000. The funding for that would come from 355,000 up above that I just talked about, as well as the accumulation of unused prior years transferred to capitals of 395,000. It's very important to keep in mind that this project would receive approximately 75% state aid from the from New York State. Now, what I'd like to do is I'd like to turn this over to Walter to give you some understanding of what we're talking about with regards to our cooling tower. Walter?
Thank you, Harvey. All right, to most people, there's nothing exciting about a cooling tower, but let me give you some background information here. In a nutshell, the cooling tower is part of the air conditioning system at the high school, and its function is to move the heat from inside the building to the outside atmosphere. It cools the building. All right, it's a large-sized machine that's located on the roof. And it's above what's known as the old faculty room, which is now the music room. If you were to walk down to the cafeteria on the right-hand side, there's a double music room there. Right above that, you could find the cooling tower. All right. And that is the picture of what our cooling tower does look like as of last week. All right, so a couple of comments I have here. It's better to plan the replacement of the cooling tower than to allow it to fail. The high school was designed to heat and cool at the same time. That's just the environmental design. And without the cooling, the building will overheat and become very uncomfortable. All right, it's designed with its glass walls, the masonry walls, and the lack of natural ventilation. It's like a greenhouse, almost impossible to remove the heat from the interior spaces, particularly when the outside temperatures are greater than 55 degrees. This creates uncomfortable heating within the space and also elevated humidity levels. Typically, the cooling season is from April 1st to November 15th every year. In addition, we have a cooling tower management program that treats the water to prevent Legionella. And we test the water each month during the operation. We were one of the first schools, and we could be the only school in Orange County that has a computerized chemical feeding system that not only does it measure the type of chemicals or the amount of chemicals that we have in the cooling tower, but it also disperses it. It's important to note that the estimated lifespan of a cooling tower is 15 to 20 years. We're approaching 18 years in use, probably 19 years since it's been sitting on that roof. So we've really gotten our money's worth out of this cooling tower. All right, so here's a couple of problems that that we've had and we've been wrestling with. All right, the tower, the box itself is made up of galvanized metal. There's different levels of galvanization, but galvanized metal doesn't last forever, particularly with the harsh environment. All right, the bottom basin part of the cooling tower has failed and it leaks. We've repaired this twice. We've used a product called PanSeal. Basically, it's like a Flexial, but a much more commercial level. We've sent our men inside, suited up with with masks, and and we've made the repairs only to do them again two years later. The seams on the interior of the cooling tower, they're failing as well, and it's leaking. It's important to know when that water leaks, it goes on the roof. The water is wasted. Typically, the water should just recycle, so it does increase our water usage and its cost. There's a float that's inside the basin similar to your toilet that has become problematic over the last three or four years. We've repaired and replaced. Still, we have trouble with it. The upper fill panels are needed replacement. They're brittle. They are affected by the UV lighting. Their function is to disperse the water to help. Take the heat from the water and put it into the atmosphere. Implication is that it does not run as effective as it should. Another important item is that the motors are eighteen years old. Typically, the motors now, we could get twenty years. We could get thirty. It's unknown. But when the motors go, we have to pull them out. They need to either be rebuilt or replaced. These are large motors, probably. If I were to think off the top of my head, at least thirty horsepower. And we would need a crane to get that off the roof. So again, they're coming up to their end of their useful life as well. Another large problem is that the the chilled water. That goes to the cooling tower. It it's it travels in steel piping and the interior of that piping has been scaling for the last four or five years. That clogs the spray nozzles. It builds up in the basin and it greatly reduces the effectiveness of removing the heat from the building. That puts an extra load on the chiller as well. And typically in midsummer, we have to shut down. We have to clean those nozzles because the chiller starts to surge. It's not a good thing for that. All right. A replacement unit will be much more effective and efficient in cooling the building and also in energy savings. And speaking with our consultant. There could be a potential savings with a new unit of twenty thousand dollars or more a year in energy use. So planning now could would put a new machine in place. Hopefully, by this time next year. I would rather plan and replace before failure. This way, we go continuous. If it does fail, it will have a tremendous impact on the environment of that of the high school. Any questions?
Can I? Just start actually by going back to the finances of it, Harvey, and then just one question for Walter about the the project itself. So. You say the so that the cost is the total projected cost is seven hundred and fifty thousand. That's not the cost of the unit. That's the cost to the district after the seventy-five percent state aid. Is that right?
No, that's the total project cost. That's everything from the materials, the labor, the engineering costs. That's an all-in cost. Now, of that amount. We would get back seventy-five percent.
But we have to, we have to, our outlay has to be a hundred percent.
Correct.
And when would we expect to get that that seventy-five percent back?
Typically, you do not submit the paperwork until the project is complete. So.
And then what's what's their reimbursement cycle usually?
It's the next. It's the next fiscal year.
Oh, so it wouldn't be. It wouldn't be paced out over years. You would. You would get it in one lump sum?
No, no. So let me step back a minute. So let's go on the presumption that we will be able to complete this in the school year twenty-one, twenty-two. Okay, we would then have the benefit of starting to receive aid on this in the next year after that. In terms of the percentage that we get, we get total of seventy-five percent, but a project like this is paid out over fifteen years.
Got it.
Harvey, to that, to that point, isn't there a way that we could do a cash flow match? Such that. We get other people's money to pay for this upfront and then we in the state pay for it over time?
In order to do that, well, there's two. There's two thoughts on that. One is in order to do that, you're basically talking about borrowing money. Okay. And in order to do that, we would need a separate referendum. That the taxpayers would have to pass. Okay. In addition to the regular budget. Now, with that said, by virtue of putting it here. You are in effect utilizing money that has with respect to the accumulated prior years can't transfer to capital. We're talking about using three hundred and ninety-five thousand, which is tremendous, which is great. The three fifty-five, even if we borrowed money, we would still have that three fifty-five there to do other things as well. So again, we're we're trying to not take on too much at one point, and we do not, even though you have. A bond. If we go out for a bond, we're still going to incur some interest costs before state aid actually starts to come in. During that first year, you're going to most likely have to either take out a band. Okay, so that is going to generate interest expense before the project is actually even completed.
And shorts rates are close to zero, probably will be for a while unless the Fed decides they want to prop up short rates. If they did, that would actually benefit benefit us because we have a lot of caches sitting idle earning nothing. But I guess. The the thought is, so this is one capital project. How many other capital projects? Are there likely over the next one to two years that a bond would be a more efficient way of financing? Such that the cash flow matching kind of schema would be useful. I, you know, these are, these are dollars and we should try to be as efficient with the dollars that we have coming in and. As possible.
Yes, but you know, interest rates are historically low. Now is the a great time to borrow money. With regards to your question about, does it make sense to float a bond and take care of some of these projects? All I can say is I'll go back to the the two propositions that were put in front of the voters. Twice with regards to capital projects that are needed in the school district. As you might recall, I had a discussion earlier last meeting with regards to our capital reserve. We do have right now about two million dollars. In a capital reserve. That is not enough to take care of everything that's needed in the district, but certainly it's a path in the right direction. The facility committee is looking at this. They will be looking at it in in more detail. Hopefully, we'll be able to add to that two million and we'll be able to start moving forward with getting some of these things done. And it would be done through a bond.
Well, that that's comforting to hear because two million gets spent real quick on capital projects if you're not getting state support upfront, right?
Right. Well, the way to look at it is our state aid percentage is roughly seventy-five percent.
But that gets paid over the life of the project. So.
That is correct.
So so that could be upwards of twenty years. So as much as we're getting, say, tens of millions of dollars, it would work out to be less than a million dollars a year. Right?
No. Well, but here's the thing. The the aid would, but as you mentioned before, you match it with the debt service. So the bond would be a twenty-year bond.
Correct, on a bond, and that's why bonds are the most efficient way to finance these capital projects. As it pays the pain upfront out of pocket and then receiving state aid over a twenty-year period. In this case, it would be. What, twenty to thirty thousand dollars a year after spending seven hundred and fifty upfront? Anyhow, you you've answered. We have more work to do at the facilities committee level before we can really. Kind of nail this down, but I got it.
Oh, Harvey, it's Nina Ross.
Yes.
I'm just curious if if we couldn't do this via bond and we have to do it in the manner in which you presented it here. As that money comes back in, does it go back into the capital fund or how is it accounted for?
No, it comes back in as state aid revenue. So our general fund revenue. So if we were receiving a million dollars in building aid. And we're getting thirty thousand a year from this, it would go up to a million thirty thousand.
So how do how does this account get replenished? For other capital funds that we don't necessarily have bonds or get approvals for. And I I'm also. Supportive of funding these things on more of a match basis where. We get the reimbursements at the same time that we we pay for the, you know, the underlying debt service.
So these things get funded. This is, remember, this is part of the twenty-one, twenty-two. Budget. So it's funded as part of the general fund budget.
I'm saying to the extent that we use a big chunk of what we have in the capital fund, how does that get replenished?
Oh, that gets replenished by virtue of any surplus that the district has at the end of each year. And we decide which reserves and which fund balance they go into.
Okay, so if if we use this up, then we don't have a surplus for a rainy day on capital projects. Is that right?
No, the remember, there's a there's a capital reserve. And that is separate from our undersigned fund balance. Okay, you might recall, I talked about the undersigned fund balance last week, last meeting. It's limited to four percent of our budget. We are at the full four percent. That is our rainy day fund. This capital reserve is separate and distinct.
Okay. Thank you.
So Nina, when you ask that question, it's very insightful. I guess the the board in its wisdom could basically. Take that state revenue that would be coming from that that project. And and by decree, just allocate it over the next twenty years or fifteen years to to replenish it, I guess, if that's the will of the board, but. I'd dollars to donuts. I I bet that would not happen because the dollars are so de minimis. But I like your idea. How do you replenish these funds?
Hey, Harvey, to to that point, Nina's question made me think of something. Would we still be making a. Allocating money out of this year's budget. To the capital fund despite the fact that we're taking three hundred and fifty-five out. To pay for this cooling tower or prospectively to pay for this cooling tower?
So what happens is this. The budget gets passed. The budget has three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in it. Under the transfer to capital fund account. We fit once. Once we start July first, that three fifty-five gets transferred. To the capital fund, just says the name of the of the account is. We transferred to the capital fund and from there. That's where we account for this project.
Got it. Okay.
And that's how it has to be under state guidelines. Okay, every capital project has to be accounted for in the capital fund.
Got it. Okay, so we're taking all of this year's capital fund allocation. And then writing a check, so to speak, from the capital fund to pay for this project.
Correct.
Is the plan.
This is how you write, and this is. That's how you're funding this. Correct.
And then you said about two million. I don't remember the exact number. I'm sure you do. What is the total number in the? Capital fund right now and therefore, you know, what would it be after? You know, we wrote this proverbial check.
Okay, so you're getting two things confused. The the capital fund is not the capital reserve. Okay, the capital reserve, think of it as a savings account. That the district has been putting money in for capital projects moving forward. Okay, this transferred to the capital fund. The fund is really much like the the budget that we're talking about is the general fund. It's our operational fund. The capital fund is limited. To account for any capital projects that we are physically going to do.
So it's immediate use only?
It's immediate.
Okay, so what what would be left in the capital reserve?
The same amount that's in there now.
Minus three ninety-five. Well, no, I'm sorry, three ninety-five is already in the fund. Got it. Okay.
Yes. So the best way of explaining is, let's suppose we we did a capital project and we use all of the two million. That two million would be transferred to the capital fund.
Fund first.
That we can pay bills and so forth.
I generally don't like giving different things very similar names, but I understand in this case why that's done. Okay, no, I I understand. So it's almost, you know, it's getting it ready to launch, so to speak, and then it just it goes out. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Bring her.
My my only question for for Walter, I mean, thank you for for walking through, you know, everything, giving us the the specifics. I obviously see the need. And I agree with. You know, the the wisdom of of doing this before, obviously, it fails. I'm just curious. Very simple question. Would you consider this? Our top need dollar for dollar? Or is this, you know, the the top need that we can afford right now? Just trying to get a sense of, you know, what what's coming over the next year or two. As we as we try to pick off some of these achievable projects.
Tough question to answer because there are so many. Different holes in the dyke, so to speak, with our facilities. And. I think once you take a look at the building condition survey that you'll be, you'll get a clearer picture. Clarity will be brought to you on that. But in my opinion, this failure, if this happens to fail, will have the greatest impact to our education. It would. It would be unbearable during the warmer months to occupy that building. And then it would be an emergency project. You you don't want to do that with a cooling tower. There's a, there's a, there's a lot involved. You have to. You have to design. You have to bring it to SED. You have to choose the right type of machine. You have to buy the work. We want to get a good price on that. Then you have to schedule it. You can only schedule the replacement during off-season and the the best off-season would. Be to start in late January, February, fingers crossed that it's not that snowy. Get it up and running and then commission the unit around the first week of April. So you are ready for, you know, the cooling season. And there there's a, there's a lot to do. We have piping that comes from the mechanical room downstairs that goes. Two stories and through the roof. We have roofing there. We we have to remove the cooling tower with a crane. We have to. Either build in place with a with a kit or get a unit that fits so nicely within the OSHA catwalk that surrounds it. So in my opinion, and and that's why I'm I'm here tonight and, you know, speaking with with Harvey and Terry about this. I do think that this is very important, be one of many, but if this fails, it will have the greatest impact on education, particularly on the high school level.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
As a as a comment on on the building condition survey. If we had gotten it on time, which would have been months ago. We would have had time to sit down and present to the board. The Facilities Committee would be able to present to the board prioritizing of the needs. And and we just haven't been able to do it because we haven't had the building condition survey on time. So Brendan, yours is a a. A great segue into why we need the building condition survey so that we can then sit down. And talk to administration, work with the Facilities Committee. And then bring to the board those projects in a prioritization. Our opinion apart for prioritization and then have the board discuss it.
Laura, that was going to be one of my questions to Walter is what did the DCS say about this unit?
Exactly what we're we're speaking towards, Louis.
Replacement.
Replacement, absolutely.
Okay.
Walter, it's Nina Ross again. Hi, is there? Is is just replacing this, the correct? I mean, I don't know what the general lifespan of of a cooling tower is, but. Is there anything inherent in the original design here that? You know, engineers need to look at that we would get a longer life out of our next cooling tower. I mean, is this a simple? Replacement and it does the same thing again. I know you were saying that there's water pooling and leaking and that sort of thing at this point. Is that just simply the wear and tear on the equipment or is there a better way to do this going forward?
Well, typically, the the lifespan for this type of cooling tower is fifteen to twenty years. So I think we've. We've gotten all the paste out of the toothpaste tube, so to speak, on this. We we do have a a very robust preventative maintenance program with this unit. We we've repaired the inside, the interior. Two or more times. I mean, a very invasive repair on the inside. Remember, a Legionella is very important. We we want to minimize the risk with that. This is a typical cooling tower that could promote that. That virus, that disease. So so it's very important to me, to my staff and to all of us that we manage that well. When we do the startup, we we disinfect it, we power wash it, we clean it, we use bleach, and and then we shock the system. And there's so many different components that that are failing from the nozzles to the fill, to the actual basin. Of the bathtub, so to speak, to the to the float arm and and then the motors. So we've been doing our best to truck along, you know, the last four or five years, but it's really. It's really come to to the end where, you know, patching it doesn't make fiscal sense anymore because. We are at risk at at a failure. Now. We are talking about technology that is probably over twenty years old. So when. The designers began to specify the machines for the building, it was probably three years prior to when we moved in. So it could easily be twenty-one-year-old technology. And I'm sure when we sit down with the architect and the engineer and we start to specify and take a look at the the machines that are out there now. I I'm very sure that they're going to run much more efficiently. and take a look at the the machines that are out there now, I I'm I'm very sure that they're going to run much more efficiently than what we have now.
Okay, thank you.
So. Sorry, Nina.
Go ahead, John.
Thanks. So so Walter, to to that, to that point, we, in this notion of replacement, we don't have the specs of the new equipment? But we do have the cost. Is that what I'm to understand based on what you just said?
We do have a general, that that is correct. We do have a general cost from the engineer.
But in terms of the the specs, in terms of the efficiency to derive, that's we we haven't done that update in terms of technology or they have yet to do that yet?
Only from a high level, John.
Okay. Okay, so let me ask you this, and and I don't mean to put you on the spot and.
No, no, go ahead.
Sure. Um, I I understand this needs to be replaced. I guess the only question that I'm grappling with right now is the timing of that replacement, right? Is it, uh, as you're proposing here? Or maybe a year or two down the line to coincide with a more efficient use of of district funds, especially with a a potential uh, a bond package on a lot of different capital projects? So here's my question. Um, you spent money, basically unscheduled repairs over the last two to four years, I guess.
That's correct.
How how how, what was the price tag of those unscheduled repairs?
Well, I I couldn't answer that right now. All of it was done in-house with with our engineering and our exploration and our manpower. So all of it was in-kind work. Uh, with the exception of uh, some of the work done by our maintenance contractor train, which we have an annual contract with, so in conjunction with them. So right now, I I couldn't give you a number, but what what I can tell you is that this piece of machine i- is at risk for failure. Can we get another two to four years out of it? Uh, John, I I don't know. But I I think it's my my duty at least to to bring forth to you, the stakeholders, the Board of Ed, and saying, hey, I I I have a concern. Um, we need to seriously look at this. I I'd like to get this on a docket now. Okay, um, we we have spoken about it a few years back, but we're really getting to that greater milestone. And here are the implications if it does fail. Um, now, I'm I'm not prepared to to take that risk um, as your director of facility. So um, I like to move on this quickly because um, you do, you know, we do have approvals from our community with the budget and with you and 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 then we have SED approval and then we have to uh, review those drawings, go out and buy the work and then schedule the work and then lead time for the for the product. Um, and so that's all going to take time. It 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 could could be a year, could be two years, even with the approval now. Uh, I I don't know that today. But um, I I do want to minimize minimize the risk of that failure and as I as I opened up, um, i- it it is better to plan this replacement now than allow it to fail.
To to make an observation, um, if either of the two bonds had passed, this unit would have been replaced already. At the time that the uh, bonds went down, we explained to the uh, public that at some point, we're going to have to start using our um, monies out of our budget to start doing some of these capital projects. This is one that is being uh, right up front about. This would have been replaced in the bond because it wasn't. We now have to use monies out of our budget to do it. That's just fact. It's what happened. It's what happened because the bonds went down. So, you know, and this was explained a couple of years ago when they did go down, that at some point this was going to happen.
Yeah, I agree. At some point, this needs to be replaced. It's, as Walter said, it's nineteen years. It's kind of at the uh, end of its useful life, so. Um, as I said, the the issue for me is the timing of it and uh, doing it the most efficient way possible, but.
The most efficient way would have been in the bonds. I I absolutely agree with you that, but if we now put this into a bond, it's now going out another couple of years before it actually happens. And I don't think we can afford to do that anymore. Because starting in April, the high school would become too warm to have classes.
Yeah, who knows? It 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 could fail come the first day of uh, AC, right Walter?
Uh, don't say that, John.
But yes, John, I could have.
I've had, I've had a tough year, John. Please don't say it.
Well, I'm I'm trying to prevent that from happening.
No, we uh.
Not inviting the gods.
Yeah, we, we have positive thoughts, John. We will commission it for this year. We will, we will whatever is necessary to get us along. Um, again, I I cannot predict. Uh, I I know what we have and I think the planning is really our best option.
Yep, understood Walter. Thank you so much and I appreciate you putting, hey, this is my priority on this. I it it goes a long way with me, as you know, right? Your word.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, and Larry, just one thing, you know, I, and I understand that the those bonds that went down, you know, they went down. That's, that's, that's history. That's water under the bridge. Hopefully, we can learn from that and move forward. So the next one that does come out doesn't get voted down.
I agree. I just brought it up. I just brought it up because at the time, we said some of the stuff that was in that uh, in those bonds were eventually going to have to be paid out of our budget, not out of a bond. And this is, this is, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Harvey or for um, or for Walter?
Actually, one one question for for Harvey, uh, just to go back to the the budget, the main part of the the budget proposal. Harvey, now that we have some updated numbers and and forgive me if I missed it, it would have been in the early slides, I guess, if I did. So we have uh, you you showed the the total increase in the rollover budget from last year and it was something like one point one or one point two million. Do you have the percentage on that? If I had a second longer, I would have taken a screenshot and done it myself, but I I I I just knowing, you know, our our uh, our cap limit, which is not a hard two percent, but you know, I just want to get a sense of uh, you know, what percentage we're eating up just with the rollover budget.
Okay, so what you want to keep in mind is the budget as a whole is our spending plan. How we pay for it consists partly of the tax levy, okay? So the tax levy has not changed from the the beginning of when we started talking about this. This is the budget that we're looking at right now is predicated on a two-point-two percent tax levy increase. Okay, our cap, meaning we could go as high as two-point-seven-four, which we're not going to. Okay, um, so what we're doing right now, as you might recall with that summary sheet, is we're we're, as things are settling, all the open items, we're trying to identify where we're actually going to end up with the two-point-two percent tax levy as well as the state aid that we know right now through the executive budget. Okay, if that tally sheet is negative, we got to make some changes. We got to make some cuts. If that tally sheet shows a surplus, as it does right now, of a hundred and twenty-two, the board has a decision to make. We have needs. Do we fulfill those needs? Do we reduce the tax levy further? Or combination? Okay, so that's, that's a decision that, you know, you'll be making as we get closer to the end of the process. Now, you you know, you bring up the tax levy and, you know, the very last slide that I want to show tonight is really, what's the impact here? You know, as I mentioned, it's two-point-two percent tax levy. So for every one percent that we were to bring up, the tax levy from the current year, it represents twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for every hundred thousand in fair market value, not assessed value, fair market value. So I try to put this in in, you know, easy to understand terms. If your house is worth three hundred and fifty thousand, you could sell it tomorrow on the market for three fifty. The increase would be a hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the year. Okay, so that kind of puts it in perspective with respect to what is the two-point-two percent mean?
Yep, nope, that was the uh, the answer I was looking for.
Okay. At that point, at this point, Nancy, um, you know, we have three more meetings. The last of which is the budget adoption and I'll open it up for any questions and anybody may have final questions.
And Harvey, if we can just go back to the, I understand the expenditure side, right? So this is going to cost us seven hundred and fifty thousand potentially. In terms of the uh, chiller, the cooling unit. How we pay for it can come from a host of of resources we have, right? We have the tax base, that's a resource. We have uh, the state is a resource, but that is not going to coincide with the actual outlay of the the project's uh, uh, costs. And we also have our capital reserve that we've built up over the last two years. That's another resource. So so it's conceivable that we could do this without the taxpayer being negatively affected by this. Is that, is that correct?
That would be on the presumption that if we use some other source of funding, this three hundred and fifty-five would go away. Now, that three hundred and fifty-five has been there consistently for the last, I could be wrong, but at least five, six, seven years. Why? Because it gives us the opportunity to do these small projects quickly. Okay, one thing to keep in mind, you talk about the matching principle with the revenue and the expenditures, okay? Any capital project that we do for a hu- hundred thousand dollars or less, we get a hundred percent of that aid the next year. Okay, so the state does have a provision, but it's a small project. It's only a hundred thousand or less. Okay, this obviously is much greater. We don't have the luxury of time. We really want to expedite this. Uh, additionally, to use the capital reserve, we would have to put that up for a separate proposition with the taxpayers as well. What I'm trying to do here is what we've been doing each year with these small projects is is try to be efficient and streamlined. Take care of these small items. Leave the capital reserve for the big dogs, okay? As Walter alluded to, as Larry alluded to, you know, we have tremendous amount of 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 needs in the district from a facility's perspective. I would not, I would, if we have the means to do it this way, we can do this, check it off, be done. Keep the two million intact and and focus using that on a bigger project. Because if you think about it, with seventy-five percent state aid, that means that the two million represents the twenty-five percent local share. So we could theoretically do a project for about ten million. Okay, that's, that's what you want to use your capital reserve for. That's what you use your bonding power for.
So, just to be thick, because that's kind of my role here, I guess. So where does the other four hundred odd thousand dollars come from? To pay for the cooling tower in your budget?
It, as it, as it indicates on the on the screen, we're taking three hundred and fifty-five thousand from the current year's budget. That's, you know, the twenty-one, twenty-two. And then what has happened is over the years, as I mentioned, this three fifty-five is getting transferred to the capital fund. We're not necessarily always using every single last penny.
Right.
So that's why I say the accumulated prior years, we'll be able to use the three hundred and ninety-five from that.
So, in effect, the cost to the taxpayer for this project, for this specific project would be zero.
That's the position I have, yes.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you Harvey and thank you Walter very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all and we are up to our closing comments from the board. Matt, we're going to start with you.
Um, okay, um. Nancy, I just wanted to say thank you to you for um, your president's update this evening. Just thank you. I thought it was great. Um, and I appreciate it as an individual board member. Terry, as always, thank you for your superintendent's update. Walter, thank you for the education on the cooling system. Or cooling tower, I guess, is what it is and uh, Harvey, you know, thanks for uh, going through that presentation. Really appreciate it. So I got.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt, Larry.
I want to say, um, I'm very excited to read Terry's uh, March fifth email. That was um, to me, it was exciting. We're moving forward and uh, I'm, I'm very pleased. I'm pleased with that. A lot of thought went into it. And I know, um, as you had said, that's the Cornwall way. We're going to do it right and as quickly as we can, but we're going to do it right and safely. Needless to say, thank you to the whole group. Um, the uh, questions asked tonight were were good. I think they were informative. Keeping in mind that when we ask a question, we're not just asking for our own sake, we're asking for the public's sake so that they understand what's going on. Um, so I I want to thank you all. Uh, Nancy, thank you for yours also. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Brendan?
Thanks Nancy. Uh, so I just want to first, uh, my thoughts with Margaret, I don't know what happened, but uh, I hope everything is uh, is positive, some positive resolution on on her side. As always, uh, you know, we're always in it together in every way. Uh, to echo what everyone else has been saying, Walter, great presentation. It's always uh, I I know you, you, there's a lot of technical information that you have to convey, but do it in a way that uh, non-technical people can understand, which is not an easy thing to do. So thank you for doing that. Harvey, I could say the same thing. I'll just copy and paste those words and apply that to uh, another informative budget presentation. I think we do have uh, you know, some interesting decisions to make moving forward, but thank you for making those the, those choices clear to us. Uh, and Terry, uh, I will, Larry stole the words out of my mouth. I I read the uh, the email on Friday. I was just, uh, I thought it was a a great piece of communication. I think that, you know, it's it it's a step forward, but also, you know, managing expectations as we, as we said earlier. You know, we can't come out and just say, all right, this is what it's going to look like in a month and this is what it's going to be. Um, the best thing that we can do is put a goal on the board and say, uh, we're going to meet it and we're going to do everything we can in in the meantime to do so. So I I appreciate the candor and uh, and just the the entire administration. I mean, I know that you alluded to it in your, your, your email and there's been others that have as well. Um, you know, the, the district administration has been doing a ton to to keep up with this. And one thing that I I I come back to this a a lot and I I think it's a a time where it's relevant. You know, the, our district administration is a much smaller team than in other districts. So a a task that's this huge, when you don't have a staff, you know, is, it's just you uh, and your, your, your immediate cabinet. Uh, it's, it's a lot more difficult and I think this is one area where uh, you know, our our team is working. I I don't want to disparage anybody in other districts, but I'm imagining they're working longer hours than most. So just know that it's, it's appreciated. And uh, and Nancy, thank you for uh, for for that update. That was, that was great. And and just for your, your, your passion and uh, and advocacy, I know that, you know, we're, we're all, we're all pulling the rope on on our end and I think it's important for people to know what's been going on behind the scenes as well. So thank you for that.
Thanks Brendan. John?
Yeah, so Matt didn't use it, so I guess that gives it me open to use the term ditto. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Um, look, I, I echo what everyone has said. I we're in a, we're in a very challenging environment, right? It's a pandemic. Um, risk management isn't easy. It's very complex. And the only way that you can move forward is by assessing the risk. And I think that is what the district is doing. And once you run the numbers, once you see the percentages, I think that the way forward naturally falls out. And so I appreciate the work of. I think that the way forward naturally falls out. And so I appreciate the work of Terry and the staff. I appreciate Megan's note about regents. From a regent's perspective, I understand we kill a lot of birds with those tests, okay? And as well as the, also the elementary school assessments, we kill a lot of birds, right? Federal government requires those to be done to make sure kids are learning in general as a diagnostic. But then we start using those tests for diplomas and for end-of-year grades, as well as potential placements. It seems to me that in a year of a lot of challenges, we can give the federal government what they need without jeopardizing our kids in terms of their future and the like by putting on tests that will have a consequence that will follow them the rest of their lives, whether it be middle school and trying to get into a, an advanced class, or high school, trying to get into the college of somebody's dreams. It doesn't seem fair to put that type of pressure on our student population when really the federal government is saying, hey, you need to do these assessments just to see how we're, you know, handling the pandemic, right? In order for you to get your quote-unquote federal dollars. So I hope, hopefully, sound minds or common sense will rule the day as it pertains to that and that we don't apply the old way of using these assessments and that we just use it to give the federal government what they, what they need, which is, yes, we performed it, and here's the data collectively in terms of, you know, how the pandemic upset, you know, everyone's education, which is something that I think we all understand, appreciate, and hold. You know, no one at fault for because everyone's working so hard to minimize the change, to minimize the damage that our kids are suffering from this thing. So thank you, Megan, for that, that letter. Hopefully, you know, like I said, common sense will rule the day. In terms of in-person learning, yeah, I'm very excited about it. A lot of schools have already cracked the code, especially as it pertains to, you know, fifth grade, K through fifth grade. The science is there to support it. I believe if the government doesn't give you what you're looking for, it's time for you to say, this is what I'm going to do, and try to stop me from doing it. I do believe that the more we look for them to provide the way forward, we're going to be gravely disappointed in that the need-to-get movement for the benefit of our kids, I think we should take a proactive stance, finalize those plans, say, this is what we're going to do, and get them to either approve it or disapprove it. Because our kids are suffering, and we need to get them all back into in-person learning five days a week. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Nina?
I'd just like to say thank you to Terry for his update and all he's doing in terms of trying to push forward and what we've heard from, from the community and to Walter and to Megan and Harvey. Thank you particularly, Walter, for vetting all those questions on on how the cooling tower works and to Harvey in terms of how will the accounting around it will work for us. And thank you to Nancy. You know, it's Happy International Women's Day, everybody. The theme this year is choose to challenge. And I think we've all been severely challenged over the last number of months and the students and, you know, all the stakeholders in the district have. And I think, you know, we're at a point right now where everyone's very clear on where we want to go. And I think, you know, I laud that pushback and challenge, and I think, you know, as a board and as individuals and as a district that we, that we have to do that. So you know, I hope in 2021 that we continue to create an atmosphere of diversity and inclusion that all our students will succeed in.
Thank you, Nina. Louis?
Nancy, thank you. Yeah, so I kind of, I kind of agree with all the sentiments of my fellow board members. Everybody kind of really summed it up very well. Harvey and Walter, thank you for your presentations, your notes. It's a daunting task. It's ahead of you, Walter. I appreciate your efforts and your diligence and your team's diligence throughout these years of keeping these things running and really getting to the nitty-gritty and, you know, maybe, maybe your efforts gave us five more years than we would have had. So I appreciate that. Because again, that parlay's into budget, that parlay's into Harvey's job, those efforts, and especially not having to do them via prevailing wage and doing them in-house, it makes a difference. It makes a difference, a big difference. Those dollars go very quick when prevailing wage has to be, you know, attended to. Nancy, I appreciate that passionate note, that presidential, the presidential memo. I think it's important. I think Nina coined it. I'll leave it said there. Thank you for that. We also have to make sure, I believe personally, that we as a board be cautious of positions that we take as an entity. The letters that Brendan crafted that we offered to the public to send out were packed. They had, they had personal notes there. We discussed that, you know, it should be cautious that we as the board aren't taking a position one way or another for in-person or remote. Personally, I can't, the April prospect looks fantastic. Love the idea. I cannot wait to get our kids back in our schools. But we have to make sure we have the, you know, the, everything in place for those medically fragile students and other students who or parents who make the decision that it's not best at this point during the tail ends or the mid-pandemic, wherever we truly are in that, in that path. We have to make sure we have all those facilities available for those kids as well. And they don't, and they don't, they aren't missed, and they, they don't skip a beat. Make sure that support is also there for them as well. So we have to make sure we, again, just, and Terry, you guys, the admin council, you I've heard the stuff from behind the scenes that you do and all the details that you look into. It's mind-boggling. And so you know, I guess, thank you from me to you and your team. Thank you for that. That's what I have to say. Nancy, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Harvey, for your presentation tonight. Thank you for, thank you, Walter, for being our guest tonight. It was great to have you with us. That was a nice surprise. Thank you, Terry, Megan, for all the work you guys have been doing. And thank you to my board for all the hard work that you've been doing as well. And a very sincere thank you to our entire Cornwall community out there because we are certainly all in this together. So on that note, I need a motion to adjourn. In a second, yes. Okay, all favor?